Welcome everyone, this is the new game called The Political Process and it's very involved, it's probably the most involved political game that I've played so far. You can start off from being in the uh school board. Um you become city council member, a mayor, um state representative, state senate, and then you can move up to governor, US senate, US House of Representatives and even president. Um you have to campaign and i- it's a number of different things that you do that's that's pretty uh realistic and you actually develop your own character from their looks and everything so you even fill out what your uh you fill out what your position is on different topics. So as you can see economic policy and it it's sort of like a questionnaire that you basically do and it'll it'll calculate your ideology so once you fill out everything click calculate so as you can see it's I'm uh very liberal and you even get to pick um what city and state wanna represent. So I already picked Philadelphia, Pennsylvania and it shows you the house district number, senate district and congressional district. And you even decide what your age is, it starts off with eighteen um just for realism, I decided to make it twenty-two. So you also can start out picking uh what position you have. So I decided to start from the very bottom and I'll work my way up. So I started out as a school board member and you can decide what your savings is and that's my salary that I'll make from the school board. And then go into political history, it shows different positions that you've held so as this game progresses, you will see that there will be more titles listed throughout this game. And it just shows you statistics of uh the legislation that you've brought up and the percentage of how many passed. So let's start off with so we're starting out in two thousand fifteen, the first week. So right now I'm gonna look through our budget. So education. So as you can see the anticipated dropout rate is roughly seventeen point two five percent. So I'm gonna bring that down um. Let's also look at our let's take a look at our budget. So education revenue so we're spending two point five billion dollars for education. And we're not in a surplus, we're not in a deficit. So that's a pretty tight budget, so I wanna give myself some spending room. So first thing I'm gonna do is tax policy. So I wanna fund a little more so bringing in one point one billion in taxes, so I wanna raise that up some. Okay, so I'll raise it up to one point seven four. Okay, so it's gonna go up for consideration. And in the meantime I'm gonna go to events and I'm gonna try to raise money for I'm gonna try to raise money for campaigning um for whenever my next election is. And then all we do is click next turn and that goes to the next week. So let's just take a look at uh so they came up with an amendment to one point six one um I'm gonna oppose that. And I'm gonna stick with my original proposal. So with each bill that you uh try to pass, it'll give a brief description on what it does. So then it'll go to a hearing. So there's one person that opposed it. So it got passed and really I should have hit this first. Because it tells you uh it describes what the benefits of that bill is. So it increases revenue to about one point three billion. And it's an increase of a hundred and ninety-two million which is about a hundred and ninety-eight dollars per taxpayer. And it's a seventeen percent increase. So this is the person who who voted against it. Alright and yeah, I'm gonna run for reelection for the school board. And I'll do one more term with them and then I'll probably run for city council. So now I have to pick my campaign manager. Alright. So for your campaign, it tells you how many weeks until the primary election. Shows my campaign funds right now is nine hundred and ninety. My name recognition is a hundred percent. And there's seventy-five percent support for my policies. So that's pretty good um let's go to our volunteers. And so as the campa- campaign continues, it'll show all my donations from individuals and then these different groups that will also support my um that will support my campaign. And I'm not gonna do a poll yet, I'll do a poll maybe since it's seventeen weeks maybe ten weeks into it, I I'll uh do a poll to see where where we stand but I don't think I'll have much of a problem getting in. So each week you'll gain political points depending on uh what laws you passed and how many groups are are backing you and that'll increase, that'll continue to increase. And the more political points you get, the more influence you'll have over other politicians. So when you decide to bring up an issue to uh vote upon it, your influence will kinda direct that bill being passed. So let's go to events, we're gonna knock on a few doors um. Now we'll do the whole forty. So the enthusiasm among Democrats is eighty-six percent which is good. And then they tell you what their concerns are when you uh knock on doors. So they're saying, so right now they're saying teacher salaries are fine. And this person opposes free community college. So this person is saying their daughter didn't adjust well to to kindergarten because preschool wasn't she didn't have an opportunity for preschool, so we'll take that into consideration. And we'll go to the next week. So already we've raised two thousand four hundred and thirty-six dollars. And let's see, let's see if we can do some marketing. Can't really do too much. So actually internet ads is only good for uh name recognition, my name recognition is is a hundred percent so so let's so we're gonna I'm gonna spend five hundred dollars on an ad to where we stand. Didn't have much of a didn't have much of an impact on anything so far. So we're gonna hold a rally that raised us to eighty-five percent. So we're gonna do some more door knocking. And spend about sixteen hours. So now we have someone else saying they want free community college. Another comment about preschool. And another comment about paying bel- better salaries to get better teachers. So let's go to our office. So in order to pass a bill, you need twenty-five hours. So since I did a few things, I only have nineteen um I'm just gonna campaign. So I'm gonna do some fundraising. So now we're up to four thousand which is good. Um let's take a look. So the higher the position and your political points and name recognition, the more money you'll get. So you'll see as this continues to go up and up the more uh donations I'll be able to get and then you'll see PACs start to uh contribute more as well. Now I could donate some of my funds to this, but I'm not gonna do that right now. I'm gonna try to hold on to uh everything I have and use the money that I've made maybe later on when I uh I'm gonna try to go through all the different ranks and then try to go for president which is not easy. So let's take a look at a couple things here. Let's look at the news. So in the news it'll show what legislation you passed or tried to pass. So let's take a look at so let's take a look at the salaries. So actually let me look to see what this was before. So it was one point two, so that's not bad, that's not a bad increase. So we'll try to pass that and I'm sure that's gonna pass as well. Now let's go to our cam- campaign. So we're gonna spend this knocking on doors. So another person opposing free community college. More support for y- for preschool. So let's see how many more weeks, we have fifteen fifteen weeks until the primary so and let's take a look at our, so this is our opposition so already I have somewhat of a advantage because he's only raised six hundred and twenty-two in donations and I've raised three thousand nine hundred and sixty. And this is the Democrat side, so chances are I'll probab- I'll more than likely win. So let's look. So based on donations on the Republican side, this Doug Baker is probably more likely to be uh the person I run against so far, that may change. So you can also look at their um their stand on issues so he's basically saying that teachers are are already paid a decent salary, so there's no need to to raise it. And he supports free community college and preschool so once we pass the primary, this is what I'll attack him on. And that should be, that should get pretty good support. Same for this guy here. And preschool, so that's another thing we could attack him on. And he's never held office. So overall, I'm the only one with experience. So I can't do anything else, so let's go to the next. Alright so here's the hearing on the teacher salary. So it'll increase spending by fifty point nine million. And it's a two percent, it's a two percent increase. So this guy is just gonna say no to everything. And I'll show how to uh if there's someone that keeps saying no to all of your legislation, there's a w- there's actually a way around that. Um and the way around that is you find out so right now I don't have any proteges, I don't have enough experience. But as you move up the ladder in experience, you'll have access to uh proteges. So if there's someone like the person in uh like the person in the school board this Humphrey Mayberry. So what I would do is I would get my protege and have him run against him and challenge his seat. And go for district two. And all of y- your protege will basically have the same policies as you do. So if your policies are really popular, then it it's a real high chance that your protege will replace the person that he's running against. So this guy has a lot of experience. And he's ranked the highest in the uh school board. So let's go back. And let's go to our vote. So there were no amendments made to this bill. So I'm gonna support it. The rest of the school board does except for that one person. And you just get to see who votes yes and who votes no. This guy is a problem, he's not going on going along with the program so once um once I get into my next term I believe if I run for mayor, well yeah, I'm gonna run for city council first. So if this guy, if that guy is still around I'll ha- set up a uh protege to run up against him and basically kick him out of office. So now as you can see my political points have gone up to a hundred now. And we have five thousand three hundred in donations. So let's what about teacher salaries? Seventy-five thousand listeners. Seventy five thousand listeners. Alright, so we're gonna take this down to about ten. Gonna hold a rally. And let's see. Yeah, I'll just go ahead. So we have fourteen more weeks. Let's go to the next week. Alright, so here's the hearing on. Alright, so like I said, this guy is a problem. So it was already approved to move uh the tax rate from it was actually one forty nine to and I raised it to one point seven four. So he's already trying to decrease it. And he's only raised it by point oh one. Which is gonna do nothing. So he's decreasing it by a hundred and eighty four million. So this guy is a thorn in my side right now. So there's two ways I could go about this. I could amend it and bring it back up to one seventy four. Or I could just say no and then just say no to uh and you know what? I am gonna challenge that. And to his proposal we're gonna say no. So once I get the points to um get a protege, we're definitely gonna we're definitely gonna have him uh voted out. So let's see. Alright, so this is gonna prevent some dropouts. Seventy six million. Um. So let's. Gonna hold a rally. Right, ten. Just gonna knock on doors. So another comment about preschool, so that's gonna be one of the number one topics. Okay, let's go to the committee hearing. So it's seventy six point nine million, which is a three percent increase in the budget. And it'll improve student achievement. Huh, surprised he's actually supporting something. So might actually get a unanimous vote on this. Yeah. So it passed. So with all the laws, um they don't take effect into the, until the following year. So we now have eight thousand in our ca- campaign. And there's still high support among Democrats. So we're gonna knock on some more doors. And we're gonna do a little bit of marketing. So we're gonna spend a thousand. Okay, and we're gonna give a speech. And since they trust us a hundred percent, they should be donating to our um campaign. Hopefully. And let's go to the following week. Let's see how many. We have twelve weeks. Let's look at finances. So we raised eleven thousand so far. Let's take a look at our opponent. He's only raised two thousand five hundred, two thousand. One thousand nine hundred so. Everything is in my favor right now. So let's do, let's raise that back up to sixteen. Alright, so now my staff. So. I'll train my speechwriter. And more fundraising. So the next week I'm gonna stop and let's go to the next week. Alright, ten weeks left. So let's do a poll. So all I'm concerned about is the voter intention. So we're destroying uh this joyous bird. He's no competition. And it looks like right now it's gonna be Doug Baker that I run against, which is what I said originally because he's raised he's raised the most money on the Republican side. Alright, so that's gonna be the end of episode one. And feel free to leave a like, give some input on whether you like the series or not and thanks again and I will see you soon.